Yeah, I'll call the order of our post meeting for May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Around the table for a roll call. John Evans.
Lauren Buckman.
Jesse Roper.
Rebecca Daly.
Sarah Brown.
Billy Cooksey from the town of Wellington.
Eric Kenshaw from the town of Wellington.
Aaron.
Aaron McConnell.
Thank you. Did everybody have a chance to look at the meetings or the minutes from the April ninth meeting? Any corrections, changes, objections?
I think so.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April ninth, twenty twenty five meeting.
All approved minutes from the April ninth, twenty twenty five. Motion to approve minutes from the April ninth, twenty twenty five meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aaron. Uh, I.
Wow.
It's not Pirate Day yet. And moving right along into Board of You Discussion Action Items. We have a presentation.
Yeah, so um with us on Zoom today, originally planned to be here in person, but with the current weather situation. Didn't want a chance coming up I twenty five. Um, we have. Uh, Ryan Hegrenis from Barry Dunn. Um, he came up here last night and did an amazing job of presenting to the Board of Trustees. It's the same presentation that he gave last night as far as the slide deck, but he and I have discussed that this is going to be much more open. Um, since he's not here, maybe not like right on interactive, but ask questions. Let's get involved. Whatever you want to know about the entirety of the project. Um, from top to bottom, please just um, he's an expert. Um, he's one of two leads on this project. Jason can't be with us tonight, but um, he he's from Windsor. As Ryan might describe coming um, in his presentation, but they're both going to be heavily involved in everything that we do for this post master plan with community center feasibility study. So I will leave that to you, Ryan.
All right. Thank you so much. It's uh, great to be able to spend some time with you. I wish it was in person. Um, the weather was pretty nasty when I was planning to be on the road. Of course, it's it looks great right now. Um, but appreciate the opportunity uh, to uh, get some input. Uh, as Billy said, I want this to be interactive. So. If you're not asking me questions, I'll be asking you questions. So be prepared. Um, again, my name is Ryan Hegrenis. I'm a senior consultant with Barry Dunn. Um, and we are uh, leading this uh, project team along with a few other partners. Um, E T C Institute, who does this statistically valid survey. And you know, I was going to trip up on that one. Um, Barker Rinker C Cat, who will be heavily involved when it comes to the community center feasibility study. Um, and uh, looking at what are the amenities that your community wants? What would that cost? Um, we'll be working with them to look at what are the long term operational costs uh, for whatever that facility um, ends up looking like. And then R V I brings some local landscape architecture expertise as well, and will be involved in the project. Um, R V I has uh, has an office in Fort Collins and uh, B R S has an office in Denver. So. Um, while all of our teams serve communities nationwide, a lot of our project team is uh, here in the Colorado area. I've been happy to call Colorado home for the last. Ten years. Um, I grew up in the field of parks and recreation. My parents were parking wreck professionals. And uh, only about a year ago, I switched over to uh, the consulting side of things. And most of our team, um, I'd say ninety percent have been uh, former parking recreation. Um, programmers, assistant directors, directors um, from all over the country. So. Um, we just love working with uh, communities and especially ones that are local. Um, and just a short drive away. What I'd love to do, uh, put the agenda up uh, here. Um, and the first item is introductions, and I know you did your role role call very quickly, but I don't. Uh, type that fast and couldn't keep up with faces and. Um, can't promise, especially since we're Zoom, I'll remember you the next time we're in person, but I'd love. To just do some brief introductions if each of you wouldn't mind giving me your name. Um, and then uh, if there's anything else you want to share kind of background or or why you're on on this interested in this board, but I'd be especially interested to hear. What you're most excited about when it comes to this master planning process? So. Um, I don't know who wants to start or how you want to move around the table, but I'd love to just uh, hear a little bit from each of you before we jump into the presentation.
Well, John Evans, um, the chair, uh, the moment. I've been on this board, like kind of Billy was mentioning earlier before we started about being a trustee and being the trustee liaison here. And then I decided to stay on the board because of the involvement that it gets us with the community and. It actually has results that you can see when you go around town and you can see people enjoying the park amenities. And I guess what I'm excited for out of the master plan is having a new one that shows some of our. Newer interests moving forward and things that have come up from when we had the last one until now. And having a document that serves as a guiding principle, moving forward with completing projects and picking things to go up in town. So that's what I'm excited about.
Excellent.
Um, Lauren Buckman, um, also kind of like what we talked about earlier, been on the Parks Board since. Well, before it was the Parks Board, joined um, a group of people that really wanted to see. Um, parks have a focus in in the town, and so we formed a committee. Uh, worked on getting some parks started, and then the town formally um, set up an advisory board, which was great. That was back in twenty. Fourteen and uh, then was also part of the process for the old master plan in twenty fifteen. So. Obviously, with ten years passing, um. It would be pretty exciting to have everything updated. Um, with our with uh, new information that we've added to the parks, but then also um, for the planning purposes.
Great. Thanks, Lauren.
Hey there, um, Jesse Roper. I have been on the Pro Sport since um, twenty twenty three, fall of twenty twenty three, relatively new to Wellington. We moved here in twenty twenty one. Um, I have three kids that are very active. We do a lot of sports and are at the parks a lot and on the trails a lot. And so um, just invested in the community and. Um, excited to be part of this process. Honestly, I haven't been part of a master plan process before, so I'm just, I'm excited to be a part of it. I think there's a lot of potential. Yeah, thanks.
Rebecca Daly, who met me last night, trustee and liaison to uh, the Pro Sport. But the reason why I feel really passionate about this group is that all of my lifelong friends. Since my kids were babies even are because of like being active. And doing recreation together and playing sports together. I think it's a connector that brings people together and makes them real and uh. It's just like the best friendship I've ever had, and I wish that everybody in our town had a connection like that. So uh, this is one of the methods I think that will. Help grow that and make people love where they live and just participate in our town and spend money in our town. So. That's, that's why I'm here.
Great.
Um, Sarah Brown, I have been on the board um, less than a year. So I moved to to Wellington in two thousand twelve with my husband. Um, we have two little kids, five and seven. Also very active, um, need plenty of outdoors places to play. Um, I've been fairly involved in the community since two thousand sixteen, managing a local brewery, doing events. Um, and I feel like our community really needs places to gather and and spend time together face to face. It really helps build community. Um, super passionate about what we have in front of us. I've never done and been any part of a process like this either. So I'm really excited to kind of. Be with it from the beginning and see what comes out of it. I think there's lots of visions for our board, and this is kind of an. And for our community and just a neat way to put all that in place.
Awesome. Thanks, Sarah. Do you mind me asking the name of the brewery?
Uh, Old Colorado Brewing Company.
Okay, awesome. Is that everyone? I can't.
Everyone currently.
Jill's on his way. Good to meet Joe.
Yeah, one is, one is running a little bit late.
Oh, Aaron.
Oh, yeah, Aaron. Just kidding.
If you were on, we would see you, Aaron.
My name is Aaron McConnell. Um, I've been on the board. Jesse and I have been about the same time, I guess, twenty three. Early twenty three, Jesse, right?
Yes. Thank.
Something like that. Um, or twenty four, maybe. But anyway, it's flown by. Um. I'll just echo what everybody else has said. I mean, the the being able to engage the community and bring that. Uh, kind of their dreams to. The parks and do cool stuff and uh, you know, just. Be active in the community and I have a listing here. That's what I think our job is, but um. As far as the master plan goes, just a direction document. I mean, we've got ideas that. I I feel that this will be a filter. Uh, I know some of us aren't familiar with two thousand fifteen that well. Um, but um. An updated filter to run everything through and kind of give us backing of this is what the community wants, so.
Excellent. Very good. Um, I didn't have this in the slide last night, but uh, just to, by way of introduction, share. I'm going to switch to another deck here. Um. Sorry, there we go. Um, a little bit more on our project team. You may not be able to see those photos as well on on your screen, but uh. Some of the other individuals involved, as Billy mentioned, uh, Jason Gank, who is the project manager. Um, and uh, down the road in Windsor, uh, colleague of ours, Lakita, um, coming from out of state, uh, will also be working with uh, the two of us. And then we have a few different subject matter experts from our team. Uh, Kalen specializes, he and Dante. In doing some of the park assessments and level of service analysis. And uh, Tom uh, specializes in uh, when we get to the community center and the feasibility of that specializes in a lot of the. Um, operational cost uh, estimates and cost recovery estimates and things like that. So you have a good financial picture. And then you see the other partners there on the other side of the screen that I mentioned um, earlier. And then, of course, you all, um, both the staff and the board are a big part of that partnership and success of this plan as well. Um, I'm going to toggle back to my other presentation now, so um. I'm on the right track. Maybe, there we go. Um, so just a little kind of high level about our planning uh, process. Uh, first. Uh, we want it to be collaborative, so we're going to work with your staff, with your board. Um, we're going to tailor this process. Um, and how we engage with your community uh, to your expectations and what your what your community wants. Every community is not the same, and. Uh, we work um, with communities of all sizes and all over the country, so we want it to be uh, collaborative and personal to you. Um, our team brings a lot of real world experiences, I mentioned in the introductions. Most of us have uh, been in the shoes of the uh. Parking Recreation Staff and and other local government positions. And we like to provide a living document, not a master plan that's going to sit on a shelf. Um, or maybe look really good on the website, but something that is actionable. So uh, when we complete the plan with you. Uh, what we like to do is we, our final step, and you'll see this later in the presentation, is doing an implementation workshop where. Uh, we meet with the staff for a better part of a day going through. Uh, how do we take this plan and start taking those for next steps to bring it to fruition, uh, even in the next uh. The next year to eighteen months and and make that uh, very operational. Again, if there are any questions, feel free to speak up as we go. I don't have a lot of slides. Uh, there's uh, probably about sixteen here, just walking through. Uh, the project itself. Um, some key components here. It's it's a framework that's going to guide uh, your future. Uh, we want it to represent a unified vision for the town. Um, so part of that is making sure that this integrates with other planning efforts, um, whether those are efforts underway. Or existing plans, and so part of our initial process will be um, understanding those plans, what what are those priorities as a town? And making sure that this uh, is in line with with that. Uh, we want to make sure we consider all community members, make sure that everyone has an opportunity. To engage, but not only has an opportunity to engage, we want to uh, seek out people where they are. We don't necessarily expect people to. Uh, show up there at the library for for a meeting. Um, we love it when they do. Um, but we want to be out in your parks, um, your local restaurants or coffee shops. Um, breweries, whatever that is, to uh, engage with your community members uh, where they are and collect feedback. Um, again, it's going to include an an action plan. And as you all have referenced, the important thing is that this is something that will help guide those decisions in the future. Uh, we're anticipating this being roughly a a twelve month process with this already uh, a month or so into that process. Um, we're flexible. Uh, we like to try our best to stay on target or sometimes even be ahead of schedule. But we also can adapt, and so if there are certain needs that that arise or or additional considerations that uh, maybe weren't. Part of the the picture when this process starts, um, the this can, you know, this can flex uh, one way or the other by by a few months, but. We're targeting uh, completing this and being in that implementation phase uh, by the end of the third quarter of next year. Any questions so far? All right, we'll walk through those different phases and just give you a a little bit of an overview of uh, what to expect. Uh, the first phase which we're in right now is developing a project work plan. This is a a document. That ensures that uh, our um, understanding and expectations are in line with the town and with Billy's expectations. Um, in terms of specifically what we're doing and what that schedule looks like. Uh, we do an initial data request, so requesting those existing plans, brand standards. Um, you know, maps that that you may have, anything that would be helpful uh, for our initial understanding. And a review of that data and then kickoff sessions like we're doing right now. That leads us into this needs assessment phase, uh, and that that includes a few things. That includes our engagement process with the community. And that also includes a lot of the uh, kind of uh, data assessment, market assessment, level of service. I'll talk through what a few of those things are, but first. Uh, when it comes to engagement, I already mentioned, um, we like to be creative and tailor that to uh, your community. So we've done all sorts of uh. Different things for different communities, a few different examples here. Uh, we've had celebrity cameos. So if you watch the show Parks and Recreation on N B C. Um, that's perd happily doing a uh, uh, social media uh, promotion for a plan in another community. Uh, we've um. Done uh, chalk walls or or kids art walls where where kids can draw what they want to see in their park. Or um, in this uh, top right picture is a trailer that moved around a community where people could uh, share what mattered to them about parks. Um, we'll come up with uh, you know, pop up engagements, events, uh, promotions or giveaways to try to get people interested. And involved, so that that looks like some, you know, trailside or or park interviews with people, uh, engagement stations. Pop up events. Or hosting focus groups either in person or or virtually. Um, and on top of all of that, we we also have a uh, online engagement platform that will be. Available throughout this entire process, and we're in the process right now of getting that created and vetted by staff. And uh, so twenty four seven, people can go on there, see where we are in the process, but more importantly, they can provide feedback. Through an idea wall, through surveys, a budget exercise, um, as an additional way of collecting community input. And then, of course, um, I don't have that on the slide here, but a big piece of this is also validating that input. So doing that statistically valid community survey, um, where we'll have that random sampling of your community. And you'll know within a certain confidence interval exactly what your community thinks about particular topics, whether that's. Uh, program or event uh, needs and desires or certain amenities that they want or um, support for things like a community center. Um, so that's all part of that engagement process. Also part of this needs assessment phase, we're doing a lot of analysis. Uh, one of the tools that we'll be using is called Placer A I. And this is a third party tool. That um, aggregates and and provides anonymous uh, insights into uh, location visitation data, and this is based on. Uh, mobility data that's already been collected, so they have eight years worth of information um, that we're able to tap into. And so we can pick a park, a facility, a a location. And see what are the peak times that people visit that? Um, what parks are seeing the the most visitors? Um, how have certain maybe uh, decisions in recent years um, impacted? Uh, you know, that could be development or or uh, even things such as the pandemic. How did that impact visitation to locations? Um, times of day or or even the visitor journey? So where are people coming from? Um, you know, from within your community or outside of your community to your parks and facilities. Uh, giving you a little bit of that kind of economic impact look, um, or where are they going to afterward? And uh, we've seen some of our clients use this information, not only for planning purposes, but also for. A potential event partnerships or sponsorships and things like that, uh, when you're able to say, hey, we've we've noticed that uh. You know, after softball, every everyone seems to be migrating to your uh, your location, and uh, this this might be a good opportunity for you to. Um, sponsor a team or or something like that. So just a a lot of different ways we can dive into that information.
Yeah, I I don't know if you have a chance to expand on that just a little bit as far as the economic impact, but. One thing that's that's hard um, for. Especially for for parks, um, a little bit better for recreation, but you know, parks are pretty much one hundred percent subsidized by tax. Recreation, we do recover some fees. All programs are subsidized to varying levels based on kind of what the program is. But the reverse impact that people don't see is what a program does. Let's just take, for instance. Um, on a Wednesday night, when there's no football and no soccer. You know, is McDonald's fifteen percent less used than when soccer practices are running to eight o'clock? And one person from each of the ten teams is going there, like. We can generally grab that, right, and show the impact that people are putting, or like you said, after a softball game. You know, on a Wednesday or Thursday night, adult softball, the difference between how many people go from the four teams down to one of the breweries in town, for instance. And say like, hey, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, X percent, I'm, you know, just arbitrarily throwing numbers out there. Directly came from a recreation program. So that when we go to budget, we aren't just saying we're subsidizing. It's like, no, we're impacting the community. Yes, that tax is coming in, but we're subsidizing that tax with our program as well, so.
Right.
Um, I guess, you know, maybe you don't need to expand on that. I'm just kind of saying like, a lot of those things aren't really captured. And it's really hard to have those numbers. You can, you can say like. If one person from every team one time a year went to McDonald's, what is that impact? But this actually gives you those numbers. Actually, a hundred people did from football and eighty did from soccer, just at practices on Wednesdays. So we can have those numbers and say. You know, public, look, you know, this is, this is the impact of that. How, you know, every time we build a new park in this area, we're getting X amount of dollars that impact the community on a. On a um, economic standpoint, so.
Yeah, my my favorite thing, I brought it up last night, but. Our parks are venues, so our parks are venues for every major event that's in Fort Collins, oh, my gosh, in Wellington. Where does that come from? Okay, um, so it would be, it's really would be nice to know, like, if we're using a specific venue, if we're doing Centennial Park. Like, do those people go to eat afterwards? Do they stay downtown after the event time? Like, what what is their patterns and what are they doing? Um, so that stuff is really interesting to me too, not and just to get a count of like how many people are participating and what and where. I think I I love this idea, so it's great. We could historically look at Fourth of July. Look at specific parks and attendance and patterns of when people arrived and left and. You know, all those kind of things, that they go back downtown afterwards, like all these questions that we've had of. We hope people are doing this, but we could actually say.
Yeah, and we can look back and say, hey, we've had the parade at ten o'clock. We've had the parade at eleven o'clock. You know, parks. Parks and Recreation and the the town in general is so heavily invested into those larger scale. Town events, but also we partner with a lot of people and main streets and everything. Having that historical data can bring us to a sweet point where we are making the biggest impact on the economy as well as bringing people in just. To be in the parks, which is kind of our goal.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, it's, this is one of my favorite reports that we do because there are. So many, there's so many rabbit holes you can dive down. So I think the important thing is we go into this process is identifying what are those questions that you want. Answered, um, so that we can set up the the right reports and uh, and do our best to get those answers for you, but it is, it is a really fascinating. Any other questions on Placer A I?
I know something that comes up a lot, Ryan, is um, especially when it gets out to the, in the public and people. You know, they have their certain beliefs about this, uh, but. Can you explain to us exactly how it's captured as a per person data? Um, people's phones are being actually accessed and all that, right?
And so first of all, yeah, we we have zero access. The 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 information we receive is anonymous. It's all aggregated. In fact, if there aren't a certain number of. Visits to a particular location, um, we can't even pull data from that. So if we try to. Target it too low, it that that you, you know, there's no way to, you know, track an individual or anything like that, but the where the data comes from. Is um, you you know, for some can be a little scary, but when on certain apps on your phone, when you enable. Certain permissions for location tracking, Placer A I has agreements in place with those companies and are able to utilize. That information to um, so all the, we are. Through this process, no new information is being collected as a part of this initiative. Um, it's information that people have either that have, people have already opted into. Um, over the last, I I think it's eight years now of uh, data that has been collected. And so we're tapping into tho- those insights that they have um, built through this this database.
I think that's just, that's important to kind of get out there as a general disclaimer, like, we're not out there seeking your information. It's more just like, hey, that's, it's out there. We just have the ability to. Kind of find. Data location. Yeah, can we take a brief moment, Ryan? We have our um, another person member that just arrived.
Wonderful.
Um, if you want to introduce yourself and.
Hello, my name is. Tell them, tell them, got it. My name is Joe Burke. I'm a a local resident here, been in town for two years. Um, work. Locally at some different businesses around here. Um, I also own an adventure tourism company, and I have a lot of uh, background in parks and rec and. Open spaces, natural resources, so. Wanted to join the Pro Sport and. Here we are.
Awesome. It's great to meet you, Joe, and uh, love hearing that uh, parking wreck background. That's fantastic. Thanks for joining us. We've. Just been uh, going through some initial slides, talking about the the planning process. Um, we were just talking about community engagement, and now some of the different types of. Uh, analysis that will will happen. We were talking about uh, visitation um, reports and tracking. Uh, the next one here is what we call a gap analysis, and this is work that uh, Kalen and Dante on our team will be doing, where they will be visiting. Your parks and locations, um, uh, taking an inventory of the amenities that are there, uh, their condition. And then uh, we we pulled together a few different reports from that. One, we call a level of service report. Uh, where we're able to look at different parts of the community and point out that um, you know, for uh, residents in this particular neighborhood. Uh, maybe that there are no ball fields within um, a certain, a certain distance or a lack of access to those types of amenities. Um, the other analysis here, this gap analysis um, is also looking at um, people's access from their home. To park and recreation amenities. So uh, within a ten minute walk, can they get to. A a park, a playground, or or another recreation facility? And so this helps as you're looking at future planning efforts to see are there areas of our community that are underserved um, generally in terms of any at park access? Or when it comes to specific amenities like adding another basketball court, where in town should should that maybe make the most sense to to serve more of the community?
And I I think for this, um, you know, some of this excites us as we grow, and it also projects for. Um. As we've talked about, what what we look to when the new developments come online, where we can actually point to new things and say, look. Here's the most recent data. Here's the most recent analysis. This is what we would suggest that we put in, or if we develop new land, like. Here's what we gotta put in, everybody makes it easy, and then we can kind of, we have those groundworks, and some of this stuff is, you know. And then we can kind of, we have those groundworks and some of this stuff is, you know, it it's pre-made for being easier to go and find grants and say, you know, we're hoping to put a basketball court here. It's like, no, we have done the study. We have done the analysis. This is where a basketball court needs to go. Here are the reasons why. Um, you know, we we have, you know, matching funding already because we know this needs to happen. There's a grant, let's go for it, right? It's those, it's those projects that that have so many question marks around them that are really hard to find grants or subsidized funding for. Or with this, we kind of say, we know what we need to do. Let's go out and then search for it.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought grants up. That is another really useful piece of uh the master plan as a whole. But some of these specific reports is providing you with um that justification and having that that homework already done uh as you're pursuing those opportunities. So after this engagement and analysis, um, kind of needs assessment piece, we also have, uh, we will be taking a look at your programs themselves. And so what are the things that you're offering in your parks? And uh, we will be uh looking at what you offer compared to some national uh benchmarks. Also, um, compared to some local data in terms of uh recreation interests and trends um, specific to Colorado. And um, it'll give you some perspective and and of course, there's no one size fits all. You know, these are the things that every community must be doing. Um, so just because, you know, other communities may offer basket weaving doesn't necessarily mean that that's something that just because you're not offering it, you you need to suddenly do that. But it gives you a lens to kind of look at um what you're offering and what are maybe some new opportunities? Or maybe certain um age groups or demographics that you're not serving as well. And um, and so it gives you just that that whole uh holistic look at uh where you are and and maybe where you want to be in the future.
Uh, and last night, um, after your presentation, Trusty Cannon, I I think asked a really, a really good question about where the dat-, you know, where the benchmarks come from, where the comparable data comes from. Do you want to uh maybe expand on that a little bit?
Yes, so the um national, so when we're doing benchmarking, whether it's for the programming or we also do benchmarking for your like finan- finances as well in terms of expenditures or staffing levels and things like that. And again, there's no, uh, it's it's always a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison. There's no no other community that's exactly like Wellington. Um, but we pull that information from the National Park and Recreation Association's Park Metrics. And um hundreds of agencies across the country self-report their um budget information, their staffing information, their programming information, their park acreage. Um, it's it's a pretty robust data set. Again, it is self-reported. Um, but when we're, uh, we can pull then from that a subset. So comparing you to uh, you know, Miami and Baltimore is not going to be a a great comparison. But if we can pull a subset of communities in the Midwest um with a population similar to yours, we can provide some maybe more useful comparisons or, you know, how are we doing when it comes to staffing our department? Or for the number of acres that uh we're maintaining, um, you know, what does that look like from a staffing standpoint or a funding standpoint? Um, looking at your operation and capital expenditures um compared to those. Uh, some of the, some of the other data sets that we use uh for some of the um kind of more localized uh trends and demographics is from Esri. Um, and it's a uh trusted source of of information built off of the census data and other data sources. And that will provide us some uh both national and local trends when it comes to recreation expenditures and uh general categories of recreation interests. So um, you know, Colorado always scores high in areas, you know, such as the outdoors and hiking and fishing. Um, but you'll get a sense for um those, that kind of assessment of your community compared to Colorado and those national trends. And again, looking then at the programs you're offering and how that matches up to those.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely. Any other questions before I move into these last uh kind of final phases here?
Is, so it also includes tracking of, um, how do I say this? Like the aging of our parks and what we, the Oh, I I'm kind of guessing when we're gonna need new equipment.
Yeah, like a life cycle. Sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, from from a life cycle standpoint, um, that level of service analysis, when our staff are visiting your parks, we use a a a very kind of simple scoring criteria. But as we're looking at um a playground or a water feature or a picnic pavilion, we'll score that in terms of whether it's kind of meeting the expectation above uh expectation or whether it's something that's maybe in some state of uh disrepair or aging. Um, and so as we're doing those park scores, they're they're weighted also by the condition of those amenities. So if you have um a park that like Centennial, that's relatively new and a lot of great features, um, there's, they're going to be, that's going to score higher. Um, and as we're looking at those components, uh, scoring higher, but also um will, from a mapping standpoint, will identify where in the community, maybe has there been um less investment in in the parks? And where um where there may be, should be prioritized uh spending to to update things. Does that answer your question?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that was something that was kind of um missing from from our last one was just that tracking of of um the equipment and the aging and and what might be coming up next. So that's great.
Yeah, it, sorry, you done, Lauren?
Um, I'll have additional question, but follow up on that.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, you know, we we've started an internal process of GI, GIS mapping. Our amenities, um, it's not, you know, extremely robust, but we we kind of took that on internally with um a contractor last year, right? And we'll, that'll be some of the um shape files that we get you um with kind of our targeting. But we don't have any values or any uh conditions associated with any of that yet. We've just kind of gone through, what what would you say, like sixty to seventy percent? Did he get through of mapping our amenities? So, you know, working through that process and and seeing what you guys have to do will be amazing for that and how we move forward with that. And then, you know, that ties right into, as you said, there's like the capital plan moving forward of what what priorities we have and where we spend our capital expenditures.
Spend expenses.
Spend the expenses.
Laura Lynn, did you have another question?
Yeah, sorry. Um, walkability, you know, huge um for for the town, um, well, for any town. But I think previously we were trying to keep it within a half mile was kind of the goal. What is the current goal? What are, I think I, I think I heard you say ten minutes. Is it more based on the time or is it more based on the mileage?
The ten minute and half mile are are fairly similar and people will will use either of those as a standard. We do it based on minutes because um rather than just drawing a ring around a park and saying, you know, is it within a half mile? We recognize that just because you live within a half mile doesn't necessarily mean you can walk there. Um, if there's a a major road or river or some I twenty five, um, so, so we actually do it based on, so we identify, are there trails? Are there sidewalks? Is there a way for a pedestrian to actually walk there within ten minutes? Um, and so it's um a little bit more nuanced than like the half mile approach. Um, but I think also a little more practical.
Nice. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So we get through all of the community input, statistically valid survey, all the different types of uh analysis that we just discussed. And now we have a lot of information. So the the next phase is figuring out, what do we do with this? How do we um start connecting some of the dots between uh needs that have been identified? Um, community desires and expectations, um, count uh board of trustee priorities, uh, the integration with those other plans. So we host visioning workshops. I would imagine that you all would probably be a part of one of those um, as well as as staff and others. And um, taking the, all of this information and having some discussions and going through some exercises to now prioritize the needs in your community based on that. Um, and then we take that information along with um kind of summaries of all of these different deliverables that we've provided. And that becomes the master plan document. Um, the other thing that's happening along with this, and there wasn't a slide for it, is that um community center feasibility analysis. So some of that same, the surveys, community input will all be building into that as well. But separately, um, BRS will be working uh with uh this group to identify um what, what does a a the right sized facility look like for your community? What are the, what's the right mix of programming within that? You know, how many courts or how many, you know, what size locker room? What what uh, what needs to be in there? Is there childcare or is there not childcare? And um, based on that, developing some of those construction cost estimates and operational estimates so that you can make some informed decisions as a community in terms of um what makes sense? Does it make sense? How big do you, does the community want to go or is willing to invest in something like that? So that will also be um part of that feeding into this overall planning process. Uh, that final plan usually goes through a few different stages of review. Um, and then it will go to the board of trustees for their review and ultimate approval. Um, following that, we go into that implementation um workshop phase where we'll schedule some time um, with with Billy, his his team, whoever else that it makes sense to be part of that conversation to talk about. How does the town of Wellington take this information and start um maybe assigning some people to specific roles or initiatives or pursuing a grant? Or um, looking at uh uh reprioritizing some capital expenditures to start putting some action behind the plan. Any questions on it, on all of that? I have a a few more kind of slides or examples in in conclusion, but I'll stop here for any additional questions.
I just want to say something about, um, you know, through through the process and the RFP and getting to have you guys in for the interview portion in person. One thing that impressed me was, you know, most, most of the the people that threw out um a bid for this, they have some sort of an implementation. But you're very firm on the idea that your implementation just doesn't stop at the handoff and the implementation um, meeting, right? It's, we're not going to be out there in two years asking you to come in and add another phase to this, right? That'll be out of the scope and time, but you you're available and you want to help us succeed. And that was very, very, very evident when they came in and said, we're not going away. We're, you know, obviously they can't provide resources in abundance now, but they're, they have great resources for grants. And it's not just gonna stop at, hey, we're done, we're walking out. Like, they want to see this plan succeed and it 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 succeed for Wellington in the long term. So I just wanted to throw that out there too. I hope I'm not overstepping how much
No, not at all. That's a absolutely true. For for, we we tell um communities that, you know, their success is is personal to us. And so like two exam, two recent examples, um, a community in Texas, I I shared a few examples of some of the engagement early in the slide deck. Um, they recently won a state award for excellence in planning. Um, actually, both both the the uh community and uh Barry Dunn were named and and we got a little plaque, which was really cool. But we, um, you know, this was several years after that plan was completed and we're helping them um write some uh justification for that award. They're now going after some other municipal awards for that effort. And so uh we've connected them with some other resources. We've written a letter of recommendation. We want to see the communities that we work with uh succeed. Another community we're working with is going after uh the National Gold Medal Award for their population category. And um asked, you know, would we be willing to provide some input and guidance? And um review some of what they had put together for that submission and see if there was anything that, you know, maybe they were leaving out or we could provide some um assistance and guidance there. And that's, tho- those are the types of things, you know, that Billy's talking about where, um, you know, that that could be a year after we've completed the plan and you can reach out and, you know, it's not running a a redoing an entire uh walkability analysis or something like that, but we want to be there as a resource. We're at most of the, uh, certainly the Colorado conferences and things and and want to be um available and and a and a resource to those that we work with.
With with that being said, what is the recommendation for um? You know, we talked about it being a living document and and doing updates um and reaching out. But what is the recommendation for um how long this this information is valid? And for a budgeting purposes, when would this group need to have, what would the town need in another um master plan? What's
Yeah, it can vary somewhat from community to community. And a lot of that has to do with, um, you know, how rapidly things are changing in your community and 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 growth and things. So that that's why there can be some um differences or or funding availability to make things happen. But I'd say many communities, they're they're planning for for the next ten years, but they're often doing an update every five years. Now, that may not be the full-blown master planning process with the statistically valid survey and 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 all of that. It could be, um, but oftentimes it's after, you know, five years into this, taking an assessment of what have we accomplished? What has changed in our community that we should reconsider and relook at those priorities for the next five years? Um, so that's, uh, you know, it it varies considerably, but I'd say kind of on average, planning for that ten year timeframe, but revisiting and and making some updates and reprioritizing every five would be healthy.
Okay, cool. That's really helpful. Thank you.
I like that.
Um, that's also really important to me because, I mean, I I'm sure you're gonna, we will take this into consideration, but we could potentially have hundreds and hundreds of houses, years and years in a row, based off specific developments that are already in works. So a a a plan or project that's like flexible in in a sense of, you know, at this milestone, perhaps this will be needed, at this milestone, something else will be needed. Like, it's really important for me to have a plan that's that's flexible. But if something doesn't happen as expected or takes longer or shorter amount of time, that it's still applicable. It's not just like, oh, the plan's out the window, you know? So I, that part is really important to me, that it's flexible in that sense.
And I think that it's, that's really important too, because we have some some very key um key things in our community that have um blocked this. Let's just go back to the railroad, I twenty five, working with C dot on on the Cleveland project. And I'm not saying that they're they're roadblocks, that they do just extend certain things, you know? We we might have funding, but that doesn't mean that that funding is, you know, gonna stick for the project for a year. We might have to push that off and reallocate funding for two or three years, you know, and and reassess. Okay, maybe this isn't as much of a priority now. So
Yeah.
Having the flexibility is really important. And and we, you know, we have key partners and and they might not be ready to jump on board, you know? Let's just say we're looking to put a, i- if the, if the community center is feasible and we move forward with that project, we're probably gonna look to partner if we get a pool with PSD because they don't have anything like that for anybody on south side of Fort Collins and up here. It's like, where does that, you know, this is all potential, obviously, and I'm not saying that I'm dictating any of this. It's just all those things that could come into play. You know, that could push a community center off another year when we have it in seven to ten years. Maybe it's eight years or six years, you know, however that works. So being able to to reevaluate that after five years or seven years with our community, you know, that's good. Um, I, so I've got a question from Aaron. Um, he said, what I get from this, he just said, when are we needed? But I think he he's alluding to, can you give um the Pro Sport kind of maybe um some key key points or areas where you've seen in the past, working with advisory groups, that they're really gonna be needed for um a certain portion of this? I'm not saying, obviously, we don't have dates set for this, but we know that we want them to be engaged at events um and visioning and everything like that. But what what else do you see with that, Ryan, for this group?
Sure. So I, this is a great first step, just even, you know, hearing some of what uh you're excited about, what your questions are, what some of your, uh, and and if we have time, uh, as we're concluding, I I'd love, that's one of the questions I wanted to ask you all is what does success look like or what are the things that we just can't miss? Um, we absolutely would love your support and involvement in that community engagement process. So whether that's So whether that's just letting your friends and neighbors know, or if you have a local business that you can. Display a, a poster or some comment cards or um. You know, uh, wha- whatever that looks like. We, and then when we're on site, uh, you know, at some of your events and things. Uh, we will put the invite out there. If anyone wants to join us and, and be another set of hands or. Another voice to engage with the community, we welcome that. Um, any, at any time during your, you know, regularly scheduled board meetings, if. Um, you know, we're at a key point in the plan where it makes sense for us to provide an update, whether that's Billy giving an update or whether it's. Jason or I being there in person or virtually to just say, hey, here, here's a, giving you an update on, we just completed the. Walkability analysis and uh you can be another set of eyes on, on that before it gets further along in the process. We're happy to um, to drop into, to a meeting and we'll work with Billy to figure out when that's appropriate. But uh most often, and, and where you all are the most helpful is once we have all of this information. Um, hearing from you and using you as a sounding board for how do we prioritize some of these things? And, and I have on the screen here some examples of um some of what that looks like. And to your point about. Making sure that the plan is adaptable, um part of this is figuring out, you know, identifying maybe what's short term, midterm, long term. But also identifying how does this meet a particular goal in your community? And maybe if those goals change or there's a particular need that comes up, that this is not, it's not set up in such a way. That you need to do thing number one and thing number two and then thing number three. But here are the, you know, the um. The costs, the impacts and the benefits of, of each of these things and as um. As you're making decisions as a community, this can um serve to guide what's most appropriate. You know, not just for when this plan's done in March of twenty twenty-six, but in August of twenty twenty-eight. When maybe things are a little bit different.
Uh, I just wanna reiterate, you know, throughout the process, it's gonna be very important, especially in the engagement. And then in the review process, obviously, in the visioning as we go through this board, but. Especially hearing from each of you and just like what you want this to be in the future. I think the biggest impact from this group as, you know, as we move forward is that implementation and. And we have our own internal um goals and priorities and our, our wish list. Um, or the pros priorities, right? And, and this is kind of, I'm not gonna say replace it. And Trustee Daly brought up a really important point last night at the meeting that. That priorities list is gonna immediately go.
Yeah.
In, in the share file that we, that I have with them. All of the, all the pros files are gonna go in there. They're gonna review all that and say, okay, this is great. This is wonderful. Um, cause that's what they're gonna do. I'll tell them they have to say everything this group does is wonderful. Um. But then we'll actually have dedicated, I don't wanna use the term benchmark again, but we will have some benchmarks of like. What the priorities are that, you know, that we set when this plan. And then this group gets to then do what we've done in the past with our own and say. Okay, board of trustees, this is what we wanna budget for. Now let's go out and do it, but we'll have that. We'll be able to pick from that. And that'll be your lasting impact. And really, you know, working through the process to identify those and then just implementing them. It's gonna be huge for this group.
We, we love when we have engaged boards like this and uh we look forward to continuing to collaborate with you. Um, that really was the end of my slides, but as I mentioned, if, if you all have time before. We conclude, I would love to hear if there are any um. Specific things that you wanna make sure that we don't miss as we are planning this process. Or if there's, you know, if you wanna share what uh, what does success look like several years down the road for you? I, I, I would love to take a few notes on either of those um before we conclude, if anyone would like to start.
Um, I, I think, you know, we've talked a lot about ADA. Um, and I think that that's an area, you know, as we look at our. Communities, you know, it's like going to school with my kids and seeing that there are a number of children in wheelchairs. And thinking like, how accessible are our playgrounds? I know there's, I think there's one down in Berthood recently, maybe, or maybe it was Greeley. Somewhere in that area that just like rolled out a brand new, and it may have been at a school. Um, but really putting a focus on making sure that our, our playground equipment is, has those opportunities for those kids. To feel like they're, those children to feel like they're being included, that inclusivity piece is big. Um, updated playground structures. I mean, our, our, some of our parks are so aged. Um, in that area. And so I think that, and the ability to move throughout our community. I mean, I think that's always been a piece for me. Like I love riding this trail, but it dead ends here. What can we do to really tie in? All of those pieces or some, or hotspots for me or some topics.
Thank you so much.
I, I'll go real quick and I, I'm sure everything everybody says I will agree with, but. Just from, from my standpoint, having the guiding document in general is gonna be phenomenal and working with this group for implementation like I just alluded to. But just, you know, um, it's been called by trustee members and, and talk, this is like the year of the master plan. And we've got Cleveland um in, in the process of reconstruction. Um, we've got this master plan, a transportation master plan. Uh, we've done work in the past. I'm trying to figure out our trails and all this stuff, but just. Those things together and making sure that they work in unison in that. Policies and guidance is similar, so that when we update um. Strategic plans, when the board updates those, and when we do another comprehensive plan update, the next time, it's just gonna be like. Here are these documents that are guiding us. What do we want out of that as a, as a larger scale? How, you know, not just parks. Trails, open spaces, um, and recreation, if, you know, master plan impacting the community. It's how does that impact where the town's master plan is going and how do those combine? So I, I'm really excited for that to be like a key piece rather than just like, hey, let's try to get a playground. It's like, how are we gonna help? Transportation and commerce and um, you know, bringing new businesses in, in, and this plan will help us do that as a department and as a team. And grants. And Lauren says, and grants.
I, I'll take that down as a note too. Quick question. I just noticed my screen's not showing. Ha- have you been seeing my slides throughout or have I just been talking in? You have been seeing the slides?
I, I can say what my opinion that I have like a personal side and then my role on the board side. And that one is more concise, so I'll ta- say that first, cause the other ones like called dreamer stuff, so um. What I need to know is how to pay for things and if it's justified. And. Right? If we're comparing ourselves against other communities and a standard, and then, I mean, every single survey. Number one, we wanna pull, we wanna rep center, so that there's no, there's no questioning if that's ever come up or people considered it. So like we see that all the time, but you know, what does that mean? How do you pay for it? Is it actually justified? Um, and so I, I think we need to take a completely different look about how we invest and pay for. Parks and recreation, because if it is really paying off, uh, i- if it actually improves our community. I know it does in so many levels, but like even from the economic perspective, if I'm just taking one direction of it. How do I say that, you know, it is justified for us to charge um these kind of impact fees? And not only have it serving that neighborhood, but also serving the town as a whole separately. Different funds potentially, you know, based off these impact fees, is that justified? I mean, are, are. If I say to do that, is that actually supported by residents? And like this will show me if that is the case, because there always be the person who's like, I don't wanna pay for anything. I don't even have kids here. Well, cool thing is recreations for everyone, but um, but, but as a whole, as a community, you can say this is what we need and want. And this is why, and this is how it impact our town. And so from that perspective, I need that to make changes. That will be imprinted and codified, really. I wanna codify what we decide to make sure it's part of our ordinances. Our resolutions, that it will long last our participation on this board. So that's that side of it. Otherwise, I just know that people will love living here if they enjoy living here. So that, that's just, that's my personal side of it, so.
Give us a reason not to leave.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Joe, what do you have to say? I feel like you have.
My number one is definitely the interconnectivity in between. Our town Wellington and what's south of us in Fort Collins, Loveland, Berthood, Laporte. Um, there has been so many people that have come up to me and started talking about wanting a multi-use trail. Available in different angles to a, access that, that side. Cause that way it pulls people off the roads, it can bring people into town. It just kinda seems like a situation, if you build it, they will come. And there are an insane amount of distance athletes around here. They, every day, they, they're biking in between Longmont and Fort Collins. But that's just cause that's where it ends. So if we gave them the opportunity to come all the way around. Um, come up, just visit the local cafe, some of our breweries, people do that. They, they bike sixty miles and just stop at six different breweries along the way. And that's their Saturday, though. Um, it would be really cool for something like that to happen and, and bring it to people who want to run. People with access that want to do it on their wheelchair, someone who's bringing an e-bike, something along the sides of that. Just being able to bike up and run.
Bike to work.
Exactly.
People will bike to work if we have that.
Exactly. It pulls people off the roads, which creates a safer situation for everybody. Especially earlier in the morning when a lot of people do like to bike, you're just waking up, getting out and about. This guy's been biking since six. You know, then tragedy unfortunately. And we hear it all the time, see it all the time on the news. But it would just be really, really incredible to, to have that opportunity. Um, and have that access to our community interconnected into theirs as well.
Great. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else?
I think I'm just excited to see it laid out um. Suggested timeline of when things should happen um so that. It can be better budgeted for it. I think, I think we have our list of priorities and, and we talk to the community and we're excited about. Certain things, but having all the information there and the data to back, back it up of like this should be the next. And then this is when we should plan for something else. It will be really helpful.
Yeah. Well, this isn't your only opportunity to provide input and as soon as we have that online portal available. As you have ideas, we encourage you to, you, you can share them directly with us, with Billy. But you can also go online and share those there where they're, they're public. One of the features is an interactive map. So you can um on the map drop a marker and say, I think we need a trail connection here. Or why don't we have a shade structure here or whatever that thing is that always has been the thing that bothered you? Or something that you've always wanted, or to just celebrate the things that you love in your parks and, and say, we, we love this. This playground or this particular thing and hope it doesn't change.
Hey, segue back into engagement. Um, you know, we, we've tried to set up our. Um. Park rodeo to each different park. We, we did a decent job for a while last year. This, once this is up and running, this would be a fantastic way for us not to just see parks. But when we're in someone's specific park, we can start mapping it out and actually making a real impact. While we're also doing things that we had set previously for this board to have as objectives for continue to grow our knowledge across town.
Yep.
About the impact there. That's awesome.
Yeah, the pickleballers are gonna go wild. Pickleball here, pickleball there.
You know what? That's what the engagement is all about and it's awesome.
They're very active.
They text me, I'm in that group chat. They text me at least four or five times a week saying, this is when we're playing, whoever can come, come.
Yeah. And they do.
Every time.
Yeah.
And I go and run around the park, they're just always there.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
It's so cool.
They're active and engaged. Anybody else? Questions, ideas?
I hope we use that map to also identify things that are dangerous or safety issues.
Mm-hmm.
Just some rogue ways that are just like not great for getting from park to park or place to place, so.
And people can upload pictures to those pins, is that, or not?
Yes, they can upload pictures, so they could, you could drop that pin and share a picture of the. Whatever that hazard is or thing you love about the park.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it's another amazing feature of, of just their. How well they're set up to handle the totality of what. We would require and they've done it in, as you said, many larger cities, but they put just as much detail and effort into everybody that they've worked with. And uh, you know, one thing that'll stick in my mind too is that uh when, when. Jason came up, he met with um kind of an internal team as a pre kickoff meeting, just to kinda go over things and chat. He said, you know, I, I take pride in the fact that I've never once with this company done a change order. Because we work together and make sure we get to the right avenue, rather than sitting there and. You know, confusing um a contract and slowing things down or cutting things out to speed it up and then coming back and saying, oh, now we need that. They, they do the right thing and take the time and listen to us and that's like the, you know, never once made a change order. Which is fantastic to think about with all the amazing work that they've done. Can't say nobody in their company has, but he, Jason has. And I would assume Ryan has. I won't speak for everybody, but you know, things happen. I'm not saying that's not going to happen with us, cause I'm pretty difficult to show.
How far he can take that.
I'm gonna say that at every meeting and hold that over Jason's head and say, we need three or four more steps. No, I'm just kidding. Absolutely not. It just shows the flexibility. I think we all really appreciate that, but the desire for them to do what's right by the community and by the people that are. Working, cause we all know, you know, again, the reason we're doing this is we're not making the decisions. We're hoping to be able to advise, right? That's what we do and I take the decisions to the board and then we move forward with projects, but. There are twelve thousand one hundred and whatever it is now, twelve thousand two hundred people that are really the ones that are driving this and they're really kind of. You know, they're the bosses, which makes this amazing that we get to take directive from everybody in one plan and say, now we get to move forward.
I think that's the piece for me that's um, that's been the most exciting about this presentation is how many different opportunities and avenues there are to reach our community. Because we all know that that's always a, that's always kind of a block. It's like, how do we reach our community? How do we get to them? How do we allow them to? Get us information. And I think our community as a whole needs to feel like their feedback is being heard. And that this is an amazing opportunity for them to be able to build what they want out of our community. And I think that's something that them feeling like they're heard and they have easy access to. You know, share information without having to be able to attend an, an open town hall, that there are multiple different areas that we can reach our community and they can provide feedback is. To me, what I, what's I'm most excited about.
Yeah.
With this.
We'll explore all the avenues that we can and get it out there. And I'm just, I'm really excited after last night's meeting and um Ryan's presentation is. The amount of support that we had enthusiastically from the board, not just supporting this project, but supporting this group. And directly every single, almost every single one of them reaching out and saying. Please, we, we, we want and need your input, cause it's you that will decide the future of where Parks Record Pros goes and the feasibility study. So the, you know, having the backing of this group, obviously, with trustees, but really getting everybody on board and pushing that out. And then, you know, obviously the expertise there to, to make sure we're doing it in the right way.
It's in our strategic plan.
It's in our strategic plan.
Uh, a, a big portion of our community, I think, what do they say, fifty percent of uh households in Wellington leave Wellington every day. Um, so some of these people you have to actively seek out, because they aren't involved to know, to participate. Um, and they're actually, you know, that's the group that we need to engage in order to be successful. So there, there's gonna have to be some, aggressive is the wrong word, but that's what I want. It's the right one, but it sounds bad.
You can be aggressive in recreation. Let's go for it.
Yeah, I did tap into someone in kickball once.
Yeah. It was boring too. Sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, you muted yourself.
I, I think you were about to call on someone. I didn't wanna cut you off.
Eric hasn't said anything at all.
I mean, I'm just excited period to like have, I mean, you know, I, I've. Kinda stepped in when our department was getting. Kinda stepped in when our department was getting in a, in a way like reworked and so. Um, you know, I kinda like brought it up in our, in our kickoff meeting. I feel like I've been here for like a. Not a rebuild is the right word, but I mean, kind of a like a a reset, I guess. And um, so you know, some of that has been like establishing and rewriting and working and like getting. To a spot where I feel comfortable and now this feels like. Visioning rather than just like fixing and trying to like. Get to a stationary place and so I'm excited to like look forward rather than like. Stay right where I am and just run around. Like, oh, this is where we're going instead of, oh, my gosh, where where are, where am I?
Where are we going?
It's the proactive versus the reactive.
Well, we are very excited to keep working with you. We'll keep you informed as the engagement opportunities uh, open up to the public. And um, Billy will keep you informed and we look forward to to connecting more with you over the next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. We're excited. Events.
He's ready.
Up to you. Your master, master.
Let's just keep moving.
Events, kids' parks day. Let me get back to, somehow I lost the agenda, sorry. I know, but I like, I have some notes on mine. I'm gonna need a little break. Okay, so kids' park day. Um, had to be restructured a little bit because um, the dock is not ready because of water. So we don't have water, we don't have the fishing derby. Worked all that out with um, Kowal. They're not gonna be doing the fishing derby on June fourteenth, which will. Be standalone. Um, so they'll do their thing, but we're gonna do our ribbon.
It was a lot.
I'm glad you'll be.
We are back.
Okay, um, so we're pivoting from Wellville to. Library Park where soccer is and Viewpoint Park where flag football is and we'll have. Events and tents um, for unfortunately not quite this engagement, but we'll still get engaged in all the things going on and we'll try, we're definitely gonna promote. Um, the master plan as much as we possibly can, um. That being said, is anybody able to volunteer or want to be at either of those places? There's no specific time, I mean. Programming goes from basically nine o'clock till. Two here. And three at viewpoint, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so if you wanna pop by and and show up, um.
What day is that on?
That's Saturday.
This Saturday?
This Saturday, um, you know, we're, we're in a state where we're. Uh, we've lost a couple people from recreation and at the same time we're hiring and onboarding, so the staff that's there, some of them are new. Um, so just having any bit of support and, you know, just. Promote what we're gonna be going through as we just discussed for the last hour and a half would be awesome. No, no need for guarantees or anything, but if you wanna just email me or text in the next day or so and let me know what times you could. Come by all the rec staff, know that you'll be there to. You know, support and chat with the, with the public.
I'm hoping we can come by our family, but I don't know what time, so yeah, hoping to be there. Be available at Library Park probably.
I just have work from eleven thirty till five, so I can be there before that.
At nine, so I can get it, but then we have. A tournament down in Denver, so I don't know how long I can stay, but I'll be there.
Sounds like Ronnie's got a lot of driving. You gotta stay here with us.
Talked about it some, but does everybody have? Understand it's a national day, uh, by the national program, so Billy always registers us on the website with. That that Wellington is recognized on, um, because it lists every. Town uh, throughout the country that that is participating, um, which is really cool. It's always fun to see Wellington on listed on there. Um, with the rest of everybody, um, and then um, um, just. Yeah, just nationally recognized to get to get kids out and so we do the proclamation every year too, so. It's a really good time to. Keep pushing that we, all the parks that we have in town and um. Um, thanks you guys for setting this up for the two parks.
Yeah, um, had to make a pivot and we're going with it. Um, yeah, it was cool. Uh, like I said, got the proclamation last night and. We'll bring it into the next post meeting.
Yeah, and I fumbled it into like, where are you going for kids? I was like, I actually don't know.
Teamwork. Um, so if. If you are available, if you wanna just kinda jump on any one of those or I can send a new email out tomorrow, just asking when everybody's available. And just responding to that. Cool. Fourth of July.
Yeah, uh, fourth of July, um. Will need, I mean, obviously our, our, every staff member that we possibly have available will be there. Um, but but we're planning on having, you know, we'll, we'll have our booth, um. Obviously like near all of our equipment and everything, but having extra volunteer help there, especially because that'll be. A massive day to get feedback. Particularly for. The plan, um, that'd be, that'd be great. That is just one place with having six inflatables this year where we will. Not have as much staff to do that, um, so you also help would be fantastic. And we'll have another one um, with the vendors, uh, like amongst all the vendor booths. Um, and so. I'll also need helps, we will also need help putting somebody there to help collect that feedback, talk more about it. You know, could have the joy of potentially handing out some swag items, you know, making the kids smile, all the parents feel like my pad questionnaire. Um, and then uh, you know, we're, we're. Gonna staff for like just safety and support, uh, in general, the fireworks this year as well. Um, so looking at having a booth at that. Uh, additionally, so if you were gonna be there. You know, hanging out beforehand, since that seems to be like a pretty long party before as well. Um, I think that's another great opportunity, you know, maybe to get people who didn't. Wanna wake up before noon and come to everything else or. Uh, you know, only wanna go to the fireworks or whatever it may be or, you know, all, all that kinda stuff, so. Um, if you're around at any of those, please. And thank you for um, helping support because, you know, we have. Legal limitations for staff, I can't keep them from from six AM until twelve PM.
Is there any way that we can include that in the perks today email? And and we can say, hey, I'm available at this location from this time slot and then we can start to plug ourselves in, so it's not so. For me, it helps me in my calendar if I can be like, I'm gonna be at the park from this time to the time, honey, you have to take the kid, you know what I mean? Like that would help a lot, I think.
And and we'll put, you know, fourth of July will definitely be back on the agenda for the June meeting. So we can dial that in, cause we're still, we're in the final phases of planning. Um, internally for for staffing and just how the day operationally will look and we'll have that all ironed out by our next. First meeting, but I don't wanna wait till then because, you know, that.
That's, that's enough, at least from my perspective, like as long as I, it's not last minute, like last minute stuff, I just.
That's fine, yeah, so we'll either get something out right before then or you'll know, just know that. You know, if you can, really any availability, but we'll try to iron that out at the next meeting if that works out.
Anything going on downtown like.
Yeah, and and we'll have, we'll have, we'll put it on. Our meeting next time, the whole agenda, the details of the entire day for the town event, so that. It can be promoted from within outside as well as the specific spots that will match for our. Master plan engagement, cause that, like Eric said, that will be a huge day and we're definitely can hopefully do a placer. Yeah, on that event, absolutely, so.
Because I think the one, that one really short survey that we did a few years back got. Well, I don't know, four or five hundred.
One location.
In the middle of the field.
That's great, okay.
Otherwise, if you wanna come, you know, have a really long day, we'd love to help with the setup and everything as well. You wanna move a six hundred and fifty pound inflatable.
And inflatable will be located at.
Are they still doing the car show this year?
Still working on that. So we'll have more details on. Everything, the, the whole map of the day. Um, at the next meeting. I know it's not quite on the agenda and I can either do an update, but we're talking about events, just so you know, we did uh, which was really fun, bubble soccer over at the middle school, high school for. Middle school age for two, two days last week, um, Thursday and Friday, that was so much fun, so working with PSD to get in there, we did it on the. The turf field, the artificial turf field over there, that was really cool. Yeah, we were asked to go back and do it as much as we possibly can, like, wow, it's a lot of setup and a lot of labor. On the ends of like, throughout the day, but it was, it was awesome, um. And then we will be at Rice's Field Day and I Stone's Field Day this year, so we kinda hidden all three of them and I. Think we might go back to the middle school, high school, field day there too and just set up an inflatable, but not bubble soccer. Still in the talks with that, but we're really trying to get out and get engaged and let the community know that. You know, we don't only do rec programming, but also there are so many children in our community that I swear we don't know or their parents don't know that we have. Soccer, flag football, baseball. Parents don't know that we have yoga and all the other things that we do, so just trying to reach them. WCP Memorial. Last night, um, Kelly did a good presentation to the Board of Trustees and got support. Um, the resolution passed to seek out um, the T-Mobile. Which are this ho- hometown projects grant, something to the effect of, that's not exactly it. Yeah. It's on the tip of my tongue, but um. So we're actively working on that. Kelly is um. As some of the trustees noted last night, an amazing grant writer, so we'll reach out for, or swing for that one. Um, but we, we really need to come up with um, what we're working on with. Tears as well as um, what the total project cost is gonna be, cause they are all. Um, shovel-ready projects that they do, so I've been working heavily with engineering over the last few weeks to try to get things going and. Tomorrow morning I have um. I have a meeting set up with Nathan, the Deputy Director of Public Works, and we're gonna go over the entire CAD file and. Look at everything, um, so here comes a little bit of unfortunate news. We don't think that any sort of wall is gonna be possible on the backside of the memorial. Um, because of where it's located and the size of it, it would have to be shrunk down quite significantly. To meet slope grade on the backside with a wall to keep it outside of the floodplain. How it is right now and where it's sloped up to, if we keep it level, we can keep it and actually we could, could and potentially can expand it a little bit. And make it bigger than the area that has been um. Planned on already in both the CAD files and the drawings, so we could expand it. But if we wanted to do a wall, whether it's a concrete wall or a brick wall, it doesn't matter. So he's gonna come in and kind of explain it and I will try my best and I might even have him write something up. And send it out to you all just kind of as an explanation, um. In a more technical way, but also then I'll kinda put my own jargon in there and be like, no, not working cause of this, you know, but he'll let me know. Exactly the reasoning, where we could get to, how much it'd have to come back, um. I don't personally think making it smaller and this group can decide, but making it smaller is that much of an option, it's not huge to start with. But um, you know, we might have to just rethink adding that wall to it, um, based on. Not being able to be engineered to specs with the floodplain.
I think it has lots of other options that we can.
Wall of bushes.
Work on, yeah, it can be landscaping, it can be, I think we have lots of ways we can, we can do that and. Do plaques that are more in the ground in front of the flags or. It's a bummer, but. I, it's still the best location.
Yeah, if you wanted to go with like a timeline thing, you could just, just put it on the concrete in the ground. And just show like as you walk through, you could kinda like walk past different memorials of certain people or. Whoever the donators are or something like that and they could still see like, okay. Um, you know, the Revolutionary War, Civil War, all the way up like throughout. Current conflicts, maybe even. Whatever you guys wanted to.
And and another thing that was brought up is underneath each one of the flags, just something that. Talks about that specific branch. Directly under there and then maybe in, if we do another phase, have a wall for different. Or I, again, still a proposal for this group. Um, but right now, estimation. Without the walls, probably something like, I think we're looking at like. Seventy-ish thousand dollars for the project, the grant goes up to fifty thousand dollars, so I'll have to really, I'll be working. Especially with Nathan on dialing in those numbers to get them ready for the grant application, which is um. Think it's June thirteenth, that's number sticks in my mind, but Kelly and I wanna have it done well before then. So we're not scrambling at the very end, if we, you know, cause with grants, you wanna make sure. Submitting it full, not missing anything, so. Submitting it full, not missing anything, so, but it, the grant itself is like. Dialed in perfectly to what this project is and what it means to the community. So next portion is a letter of support in um, you know, I know. Laurelynn has said that she would be willing to write it, and everybody could sign it, or you know, write it and then send it to the group and make sure that we're good to go, moving forward. You're good to go, and we're actively looking for other partners to give us um the five requisite. Letters of support from the community.
So can I ask, does this mean we're back to like a redesign? Like where are we with, or do we have to have that level of detail for the grant? I'm confused at how much we need to have. Envisioned and estimate for the grant submission.
Yes, so the original design didn't have a wall, so what we originally have is that CAD file from. Engineering before we ever, you know, to make sure that we were out of, out of the floodplain originally. So we can go back to that for for the engineered portion, and then go back to some of the. Some of the renderings that were made, and then just have that removed, and then that will basically give the vision for what the project is.
Falling at gardens and and um. Yeah, we'll just pivot. I like the idea of being putting, someone escaping back behind it too.
I agree that nobody has ever said smaller would be okay, so. Answer that question, if anything bigger.
Yeah, bigger, have some events that are like. And then we've thrown around some ideas about tears and.
Yeah, we we did have um. You wanna talk about it, go ahead.
Just did some research on, right, what what other towns have offerings for for tiers, what? How detailed do you make it? How, I don't know, um. I think the ones that we found that were more simple is easier, right, instead of getting crazy wording. Um, people can donate either a monetary amount um. And and have that tiered, or they can specifically go for the benches, as it stands right now, we have six benches. Um, and so Billy will put those costs together for what that is, right, but they would get, they can donate money. We'd have six different people that can donate to a specific bench, and then also um specifically for the flag. Um, and pole, um. For those, and then everything else would just be monetary donations towards the project, um, we could. I guess another one I hadn't thought of until yesterday was um for the flag interim area, we could also have. Somebody want to be a sponsor for that particular area, um, but otherwise, yeah, then the tiers, um, you know. What a hundred, anywhere from a hundred to five ninety-nine, five hundred ninety-nine would be like a bronze tier, and then it goes up from there with with silver and gold. I don't know, everything I found that was really simple was more appealing and and easier to to follow through with.
So one thing I would potentially propose is as we gather all this and finalize. What we're working on to put in the package for the grant. To make sure that we're all on the same page about final design and what we want to do with both. The tiers and how the cost breakdown looks, um. Maybe set a special meeting for that in advance to us pushing the grant forward. So that, you know, cause once we, once we do that, if we are awarded the grant, it's like. It's go time on this project, um, I think you have, I can't remember, it's either like twelve, twelve eighteen months to. Complete the project, so, um. You know, I don't wanna, without a full vote from this on finalized piece, um. You know, I don't wanna go out and get a grant and then have it come back and be like, oh, we need to change this, cause we kinda can't. Right, of course, in any project, there's gonna be things here like. We, if we change a plaque, or you know, we go from four to eight benches, I'm just saying, six to eight benches. Those kind of things probably, but we need to have what it's gonna look like set, so we can propose that and make it look as good as possible, so. Just a thought that I had, if we wanna get down and only one thing on the special meeting or work session on that, or whatever we wanna call it.
I'm a little bored with that. Yeah, yeah, if I can draft or bring bring some of the tier information and what we're talking about and.
And what I'll, what I'll propose to do before that is get all the information out so that we, you know, we don't spend time. Rifling through it as much, we can really say, hey, here's, here, give me your feedback. We'll get it all together, and then we'll do, you know, a presentation, basically a grant presentation to this group. And then if there's any small tweaks, but then just kind of get the rubber stamp and make sure we're all on the same page.
I feel like it's appropriate to talk about friends in Wellington, just at this point, um, we are official, we filed our five oh one C. We have our IRS status, so we are official, um, we also filed with the state of Colorado, so that's pending, but. Um, we've got some good momentum, we've got good relationships around the town. In this discussion about WCP and, you know, donations, you know, how do we support you all and driving. Additional fundraising, like what does that look like, so? We wanna be representative of that group and do what we can, we certainly don't wanna compete, so whatever that looks like, like we. Are here to support, so. Just offering that.
I know there's a lot of people that, especially on Main Street alone, that want to help so much, so. Congratulations on the, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's super exciting, so, yeah, let's talk about how we work together. I think having the numbers. Yeah, right, and and, cause I do, and you guys are gaining a lot of momentum and excitement. Yeah, we're excited.
Moving on, post bylaws.
Did you have a chance to put together a binder for me today by chance?
Um, so. I'll get to that, one of my thoughts on, you know, after I sent that out was, I could print this all out, but. The goal with putting this up here is there's some, there's a lot of clerical stuff. That needs to be changed in all of our bylaws and our articles and, um. I'm, I'm in conversation with our um town clerk to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. And if. From what I believe, you know, there has been, there are resolution or was a resolution to change the gross name, but like. It's, you know, these ones that we have currently in form. Aren't clerically correct, so to print all this up and then go back and do it and change it, I was like. I don't necessarily want to, so for now it's in the packet. And also um same thing with the, you know, the twenty fifteen master plan, if you wanna copy a hard copy, I can print you a hard copy.
Okay, I function with a hard, and then I have all my stuff in a binder, that's how I function.
Um, I can, I can get you that copy, I just wanted to make sure and see how many people did, cause you were the only one that had responded to that. Or had asked for one, if anybody else needs one, I can get that, but I didn't wanna print off, you know. Three different binders of forty pages that we're all gonna flip over when this process is over.
Also, Jesse, yeah, has worked really hard to put together. Well, you have, yes, all of the park information, and it was brought up at several meetings when we've talked about binders that. People really wanted it in a digital form as well.
Yeah.
Um, so we have a lot of this information.
We do.
Pool, right? It's just not the most updated, as Billy said, so.
Right.
Some of this isn't, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, everybody has access to that, Sarah, I'll share that file with you as well.
Yeah, I think you have, yeah.
Is that like a solid file you have, or like, is that the drive? Yeah, that's, that's good, I just wanna hit her, cause then we can, if something's outdated, we just yank the old one and put the new one in.
So yeah, if you have, if you have requests, if you need a hard copy, let me know, but until some of these bylaws are. Recommissioned as, you know, up to date, uh, we'll just kind of keep replacing them there. And then I think what would be a good idea is to then reinvest into what. A binder should look like, you know, what what all we want in there, um, so that we have everything squared away. For everybody.
Everybody read through the bylaws, like I think there's a level of, like, I've just kind of assumed, um, when people join the board, like. That they looked through the bylaws, that people looked through master plan, that have looked through all of these things, the bylaws were originally written in twenty fourteen. Um, so obviously have needed an update, and then we have the ordinances as well. Um, they go with that, um, our most up to date ordinance concerning. Board functions is from, was that twenty twenty one?
I think it's twenty one.
Okay. Um, so we have that goes along with with functions as well, um, but just to go over the bylaws, does anybody have questions?
So most of what it. Just for information, most of what it says and captures isn't really going to change, it will just be verbiage and then, you know. Approved in twenty fourteen, maybe we'll. Sit down as a group and approve the new ones, um, that are more consistent with. The verbiage that we're using now for. Um, the updated ordinances, resolutions that kind of match what has actually been passed. Since it's not really up to date in here, but really why. From my standpoint, everything that's in there as far as what everybody needs to be doing in all the different titles should remain the same. Kind of, I believe in there, it says, you know, we can review those and pass changes as a. As a board, Joe, John, you on? There, there are a few things that we have changed that maybe we should get in there, because we used to do the elections in June. Um, and that was mainly because it was after the trustee elections in April and certain reappointments and movement throughout. Uh, so if you wanna do something different there, um, to fix that, and then. Obviously, there was a couple other, but I don't think they apply anymore.
One of them said a one-year term, that's not.
Yeah.
So all that's, and all that.
I think there's um somewhere it said three years. Yeah, membership under five, the term of the other members of the Wellington Parks Advisory Board shall be three years.
I think what's most important too is just making sure that whatever's in these bylaws aren't in conflict to ordinances that actually determine what, what, how advisory boards. Do it, because, you know, if they're, if they're say something different, then it's hard to know what to follow or what to do.
And and that's what, you know, after looking through it, I was, oh, I'm just, I need to take this to to hand, and we need to update these, so that we can. You know, plug and play with what actual ordinances are now, and then adopt that here. Um, I don't, we don't think that there'll be anything that needs to go to the Board of Trustees, cause all those ordinances have already been.
Adopt your own bylaws, so.
Right.
Yeah, but anything that is like redundant to the ordinance doesn't need to be in your bylaws whatsoever. Right, cause those are all gonna apply regardless, so it'll be easier just to streamline it that way, and then you don't have to update it.
I think also in there, it mentions about being a resident of Wellington, but a few years back, we talked it about it and found that. As long as you lived within the growth management area, you could apply, and that would also help us get other people that. Maybe aren't necessarily right here in town, but still recreate here and and go to our parks, so I don't know if we need to change any language in that.
I think that's also. Cause it, it's just like determines that quasi judicial kind of boards have that requirement, that resi- residential requirement, but the other ones are. Generally growth management areas, I'm pretty sure that's in, I can't remember offhand, but that might be something that we don't have.
I know the application process, that's the verbiage we use. Is or the growth management area. So, so all those, all those things that really have, have been actually changed and are changed to ref- and been reflected, I guess is what I should say. We'll do those internally and then they'll be brought back, um, but for the most part. How the board runs and all of the um requirements of a. Of a post board member should stay.
A couple things I think was changing for the secretary role. That we've adopted over time, although we talked about, right, would be the annual report.
Yes.
Right, like, um, perhaps we want that to go in there, that how the secretary is providing that, just kind of a recap of the year. Um, so that might be a change that would affect our officers, um, and then how you, um, also just maybe on on. Helping with the drive, I guess, maybe.
So, I I guess my standpoint again is maybe kind of like the. The uh T-Mobile grant, maybe let's do, let us do some internal clerical work to to shore those up, and then we'll bring it back and. We can probably do that at a regular meeting, you know, maybe at the, after the Fourth of July, and things aren't so crazy, when we don't have so much on the agenda to get through, but. Uh, make, make that a focus, and then just adopt the new ones as a group.
No, that sounds great.
Make some edits and then bring them back and good to go.
Aaron was asking if we had uh any progress in our open position on the board, if we were, were, what we were doing.
So, I reached out to Robert. And. Basically, his standpoint is that he doesn't want to hold up a spot. But the reason he's not here should be alleviated by middle end of July. And he would be still fully committed, he said in our conversation, he's gone back and watched. Most of the meetings that he's missed, we had a conversation about when Cody was here, he said he watched it all and enjoyed it and just wanted to. You know, wish, wish he could be here to talk about it and everything, um, I guess my standpoint, and this is just me from a. Um, a hiring and time investment on both town staff and post board. Continuing getting people up to speed and another new person while we're going through master planning. I feel like if he's gonna stay at least somewhat engaged, and then be fully re-engaged in a month and a half or two. That's about as long as it takes us to repost and have interviews, and then have an actual another post meeting to. Or go to a board of trustees meeting to have it, uh, you know, have them. Positioned on the board, so it's always up to this post board to make that determination, but um. He wants to stay on. And I, I told him that I would let everybody know, and he said he would be back, at least if not for the July meeting for sure, for the August meeting. If that was the case.
I'm personally think that, um, I would just wait for him. Um, he, he does stay active when he has been here, and he is really engaged and. Really passionate about doing it, so I agree, if it's gonna take as long to replace it, why not just keep the guy, he's been here five years, I think. On the board, been here for a while, I'm.
He's such a unique perspective, I know nothing about the skate parks and skateboarding, and I just, I learned so much. Um, and and the, his dedication to, um. Uh, kids and getting them involved and and with the skate park has just been phenomenal, so I, in my opinion, we would. Be okay with it, but it's up to you guys too.
I agree, I think he's very valuable and committed, so. I would vote to keep him.
I don't see any reason not to. Like, yes, brings a lot.
I'm exactly where you guys are, yeah.
Okay.
If it's gonna take it that long in the process to find someone else anyway, might as well. Again, especially if he wants to stay on, a month and a half isn't. It's not gonna sink the ship.
I totally agree there too.
There he is.
Yeah, um. He, here, just being candid, he, he's very was sad about having to move on and said, I still wanna be involved after, so. What, to what level, he's like, well. I can still be involved or whenever it comes open, I said, well, how long, and he said, um, what I'm doing, I'm, I think I'll be done by June. End of June, middle of July, somewhere in there, it's like. I mean, for me, it was just like, I'll, I'll post it, but then I, I asked the internal channels, like, what does a sabbatical look like for. A member and how does that work and basically look through the bylaws and there's really no reason, the only thing it says is like. It can be voted out. So it's like, I, you know, he's invested, so. Told him I'd bring it here. Don't think anything has to happen, right, I don't think you need to vote to keep him.
Do we say, we do not accept your resignation?
Ready to move on to summer scavenger hunt?
Yeah, we'll just scroll down to that, so this is something we had talked about, or we wanted to kind of get this kicked off, um. Very, very basic, this isn't like a finished product or anything, it's just kind of the idea thrown down from, um, like, kind of. Rec staff took this on one in particular, Kristen, and she wanted to basically just put something down. Um, and let you all kind of figure. Take some time, give some feedback and. Fill in some gaps, change some things, and then we can get it. We can get it moved around, it's kind of quirky, kind of funny. Um, but basically the idea is to have something at every park. Um, an amenity with a clue, and she was just like trying to go through this, I mean, she spent some time, she didn't just whip it up today, she worked on it and. Within the other things that she's doing in her job, which is crazy this time of year, um. But, uh, basically, putting this out to the public and allowing anybody. To either take a picture, if they have the ability to draw a picture or write a story about the amenity. At the park that they can, that kind of makes it, um, a little bit more inclusive, I, I don't even know if we wanna per- put parameters on that or. We might even wanna say like something else creative based on this. Clue and the amenity at this park, um, and then they can email it to recreation, bring it by the front. Office, you know, they can bring it to a post meeting as a completed. Um, scavenger hunt, we'll take it anyway, um, just something fun for them to do as this group has kind of brought up in the past, so.
Is there an incentive to doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what the group would. You know, we can come up with ideas.
What if we did a, like a Laramo County Park Pass or something? Like throwing it into a raffle, so that way they can go to like Horace Tooth and. All the other. I know none of them are really in Wellington, would you kind of go against it, but in terms of like getting people outside and enjoying parks and recreation and all that stuff too.
Yeah, we were, we were thinking about, you know, just the possibility of doing similar raffle, maybe like. Re-block party where we put the inflatables in, yeah, okay. We're talking about that down the road, not on the agenda.
Kids love ice cream. You do something as simple as like a free ice cream cup, like maybe a free pizza for the family and ice cream.
Yeah.
And doing something like that.
If we could get local, local partners to, like maybe a free ice cream for everybody that completes it, but we were also thinking like. You know, fifty percent off of a sports registration or maybe you won for a grand prize, it's like.
So it'd be like, if you complete two of them, you can go, I'm gonna get a free ice cream cone, if you complete five of them, you can come over and then you do like this one, and then if you. Finish all of them, then you get.
Well, I think, I think one of the things is we're, we're not really looking to spend too much capital and invest a ton, so like. Maybe this is another engagement piece where if we, well, once we get this finalized, going out to the businesses and saying, hey, do you have a. You know, X amount of whatever you guys wanna look for to put that out there. Yeah, like. Anywhere, right, any of the things that any of the businesses would want to. You know, a, an ice cream, again, he promoted as one free ice cream for ten different kids and you're probably getting four or five pizzas out of that too, right?
Exactly.
Um, or free kids meal or whatever, so anything. Any thoughts, any ideas, and then maybe one grand prize or something like that?
I mean, several businesses too might just wanna donate something like. I mean, we usually donate to. You know, if it's small enough, they'll donate, um. Yeah.
We could specifically to ask all those, you know, options and stuff.
Town swag, you know, so these guys.
You know, someone gets, everybody that completes it gets a little bit of swag, they give out a park and plays and stuff like that, but.
Kids eat up fidget spinners.
Color changing cups.
I love those too. That's so magic.
I'm gonna go, I thank you all for saying this and thank you for being recorded. I was about to order those and everyone in the office was like, no, we had so many of those, nobody wants anymore, and I was like. That cracks me up.
It's just like today.
Alright, did you say percentage off of rec registration or did I totally make that up?
Yeah, like a youth registration.
That's a really good idea.
That, that would kind of be like the grand prize and I like that idea, i- if you complete it, you enter a raffle, you get whatever, you know, once you complete it, you'll get. If the group wants to go find businesses that wanna donate to this fun thing, um. Great, but I think everybody that finishes also.
I told him it was his punishment for arriving late.
And was here, I was trying so hard.
I'm over here swinging back.
I know, I loved watching all of you just. One little lead forward.
What could be cool and also for, to make it interactive and build it into social media is to have, um. A code at each location and they upload a selfie at that location with the thing that they were supposed to find. Then you might have like a million people doing this with the frisbee golf thing. And then a disclaimer of we can use these photos for whatever.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a cool way to like, get other people to participate and to like, share people doing stuff in practice.
Yeah.
I think, um, especially if they're trying to find a specific location and it could tell them about that location.
Yep.
That could be fun.
You gonna, so feature one a week? Like pick one from the entries for a week and hints or something if you need to. Feature, like it's a feature for our parks. Too, yeah.
Little park blast, we're trying to do those as much as possible, um, the town is in general.
That's cool.
Moving in that direction, uh, we definitely still wanna keep it as accessible as possible, so you know, if you don't have a phone, you can still enter.
Yeah.
With your drawing, with your story. Um, you know, with a voice recording, however you wanna capture your time at the park. Finding or experiencing the amenity, um, open to all of that, but. Be fun to, a- and, and I, our hopes really is that like. You know, somebody goes and draws pictures of every single one of these and we can maybe feature a couple, a couple of their pictures and put those out. Last that out, like those are the kind of things that we really wanna, wanted to come from this. Um, or like, if someone does like a little voice recording or a poem or something, like how cool would that be if they. If they wrote a story about being at Pirate Park and finding, already made, you know, like, and then I was, you know, like, those are the kind of things that we would put out there and say. These are what the kids are doing.
I mean, you could make it depending on how many different ways there are to share what you've done. That they get an extra bonus point if they use a different way of recording it every time, I mean, I know you wanna go that complex.
That might be a little much.
But, you know. If you use three of these different options.
You get an extra fidget or something like that, yeah.
You get poems and pictures when you make it a contest, not when it's a, you could submit whatever you want. But you could say best this, that's when you'll get actually inspire people to do.
Well, if you're picking out one a week, you could always just say that you're picking out the most creative for the week, and it could be a picture or a story or.
Yeah.
You know.
Or people are competitive.
Um, like the phone option or anything, you could always, or serve someone who doesn't have a phone or access or anything like that, you could always print out like a, just a tiny little booklet. With like one page that says the clue in the park, and then the other side. And then it has like, where a section where you could write a poem, where you could draw a little picture or something like that.
Cause we were talking about whatever we, like having it at the front desk if people want to come in, so that's.
So then they could see it, you could advertise it in person as well.
You're getting all these notes down, Jesse?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
And we'll try to compile this.
We'll pick up the brochure, the map, the map thing.
Well, you could also do it at the engagement sites when we're talking to people about.
Absolutely.
And this is like, get to those parks and while you're there, drop a pin, use this app and drop a pin about things that you like or you would like to see at this park, I mean, it's just a whole nother level of engagement. That you can tie in.
I'm thinking of timeline and are we trying to do, like, spread it out over the summer or are you trying to get everybody to every park and one day? Well, that, I, I think that's important.
Yeah, it's gonna be a, a summer, and, and we won't like deadline it when school starts, I think. You know, even like end of October, like let, let them cruise through it, give them time.
Yeah, I mean, pass out movie nights and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Then you could even have it too, it's like, for those kids that you don't know, and hopefully all these new people could, coming in, if someone who has one of those things. Be like, on a movie night, talk to this person, which is you, so you could like actively meet people. Get Welly's signature at this event, make it like a bonus one, then you get a free ice.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, you know, so CSU has their Aggie Day, we did that last year and they had a scavenger hunt. And it was similar to that, it was like, go talk to this group about this and they will answer a question and you had to like jot it down on the scavenger hunt. So that's a, that's an interesting idea.
If we do something like that and we incorporate events, what I'd say is you probably would have to keep it like. To get any sort of prize, maybe we'd have to tier it, like if you do all these, that means you made every movie night, you made every park. Like, wanna get something if you've only done six of the total, you know, like. Okay, all good ideas, I don't think we're gonna come to some sort of a finalized agreement, but this is what we needed is ideas. And I will throw this back at Kristen and we'll get something put out, um, worked on and then. I'll send it out to the group and then we'll get it posted.
Cool.
This is exciting, I mean, this is fun.
It's pretty cool, thank you.
It is.
I was like, what could you search for, and then I was like, not eggs, I was like, maybe you have a. There's always so many. Or plastic dinosaurs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, um.
Cash, cash is some plastic sugar.
Global cashing. For what, Geo cashing?
Um, but you know, just working within our confines, first you're doing it, I think it'll be fun.
Oh, that's cool.
So, something light and enjoyable. Good to talk about bylaws. Good, future calendar. Yeah, it's always on here, you know, it's accessible. Um, anything specific you wanna see, you know, the, the fourth of July, we'll be at our June fifth meeting. That's probably not right, is it, that's the first, June fifth is the first.
Yeah, we need to.
That day is wrong, sorry.
Thank goodness, I wasn't gonna be here.
No.
I was like, come on, the special meeting too?
Oh, you know why that, yeah, that's on there for a special meeting, I don't know why it still says that, that's probably copied paste from last year, anyway, so the June meeting. Unless we wanna do, as we talked about, a special meeting then, something we need to talk about is a date for the special meeting for. The, um, T-Mobile grant.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on date there?
Unless everybody has one out for something, this, I feel like this time of year is a really, at the end of school and.
It's due June thirtieth.
Through thirtieth, not thirteenth, okay, good.
Yeah, I mean, Kelly said she wanted letters by June sixth.
So that can go out.
That week before of Memorial Day would be the only one if you guys are gonna meet in advance at the deadline.
I'm free that week, week before Memorial Day.
Uh, sorry, the, the last, school's out on the twenty eighth or twenty ninth or something.
I will be gone twenty eighth to the eighth for a wedding.
That's a long wedding.
Dude, heck yeah.
It's a long ways away.
So. No, we will, I will have all that information present.
You said the grant's not due till the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Of June?
So to compile all that. What if we put it, I mean. By the sixth, so that's Friday the sixth, but that means we'll, we'll compile the grant maybe in here, so maybe that next week even. That's our meeting.
Could, it, what's everybody scheduled for coming early to a meeting, like at five thirty?
Or just keeping that agenda short and working on that.
Oh, yeah, we have nothing else on that.
You know.
That works.
I would prefer to do that than add another meeting, to be honest.
So we can just basically talk about the finalization of the fourth of July and then work on that.
Yeah.
Since that's big, and then I'll always wanna at, at least sneak in there what we're working on master plan, we're gonna have to do that, but we, we, I can keep that short.
I could possibly get here at five thirty two, if that is something everybody else can do, but I know that's. That can be challenging.
I mean, if we don't have a presentation, we're, we're working at what? Two hours already, I think we can get all that done in normal two hours, if we don't have a, a large presentation at the front end. So I'll rework that, take that special meeting off, put it on. That June eleventh and then just keep the agenda really short. If there's anything necessary by then, we could, maybe, maybe we could just adopt the bylaws if everything's set in stone by then, but I'm. Not promising we've got time to work on all of that by then, but. Announcements. Um, I think we kind of went through a good amount of what we're working on, Splash Pad opens next Friday, hopefully we. Opened it up, we got some work to do, which we started, we were there today, um. I mean, that's the big one, we've, we're putting out the full list of movies and movie in the park, the, the movies that. In the park schedule has gone out, but now we have the actual movies tied to it, so that'll be going out, it's up. It's on the website now. Yep, um, I have.
Five hours.
So there's four, we're looking to maybe add a couple at the end of the year, it just depends on how that schedule looks, we didn't wanna tie ourselves down, but we. We're gonna try to do a couple more movies, um. And then, um, so let's see. I'm just trying to think of internal meetings that affect this group that we haven't talked about, oh, um, I've got a. A meeting with Kelly to go over the finalized information that we want. In the. Uh, park map. So, that's set, it will then go to the contractor to put it all together and get printed. That should be coming out, hopefully, hopefully in a month or so.
That'd be great.
So we can hand those out, we can. So we can hand those out, we can scavenge her and we can engage. Um. I don't know else.
Or updates. Uh, we had a big tournament a couple weeks ago.
We saw that.
Yeah. It's great, um, hoping to bring more next year, um, especially, so. Uh. They, we got some really good feedback from one of the teams that were there. Um, after we finished prepping about seven to twelve minutes after the game was supposed to start, but the. Um, parents were all saying that if they were at any other location they've been to, they would have just canceled the whole day. But we're grateful that we, um, were there, like putting in the work to. Get on the field and play, so a huge, huge shout out to, um, our guy. On fields, cause he was there from five AM both days and the first day.
What?
Five AM, we didn't start games till nine fifteen.
Wow.
And then the second day, five AM to eight thirty was when the first game started and he was just working the fields the whole time. Um, with help from other people, Billy jumped in, Anton, so. Um, and I think it brought in, we should have had teams staying at the hotel here, like our, our.
I saw him at the restaurants, I saw all kinds of uniforms, a bunch of different teams were out and about.
Tri- Triple Crown does a, a great job like compiling lists of like places to eat and stay super nearby, so they like provide our hotel as a listed option. They call the hotel, try and like, make sure that they warn them that people might be coming. Um, so, so. Yeah, that was a, a cool big win to. Just keep in mind, like it's a big thing that, you know, doesn't necessarily get showcased, but hopefully comes back in the other ways of. People spend money here.
Wish we would have placer for that one, just specifically.
Well, you should, cause it's all historical data.
Historical data, so you shouldn't be able to pull it.
That's true.
That, that's one of those.
We have a lot more traffic downtown, you could.
Yeah, it was really cool. So many bullets and. Like it's a baseball uniform.
Yeah, it is.
It was cute.
Yep. Any updates?
Yes, I do. Uh, it is T-Mobile ho- hometown grant. That's, that's it, that's it. There was no more to that. I thought there was like a whole name to it, but that's it. So we approved that from the board trustees. They can pursue the grant. We already talked about that one. Um, there, we had a combined meeting with the Chamber and Main Streets, which was really good. Um, and one of the things that came out of it that I wanna make sure everyone here is aware of is that they're doing a consolidated community calendar through the Chamber. Um, and it, the way it works makes it really easy to distribute. So all of our events definitely need to be on there. As of now, they didn't have any like town Wellington events on there. So that, that's one I think that we could benefit from, plus. In general, just a great resource for things. Um, that usually occur at parks. And then outside of that, another thing, again, not directly related to you guys, but something we approved was related to liquor licensing and special events. That, um, people who have had an event previously, they're doing the, the next year of the event. No longer require a public hearing and the whole like process to come in front of the board. It can be administratively approved and much quicker. Streamline process for making it easier for people who are already established and know how to run events to have events in parks. So that was a huge win, I think, in my mind, to make it easier, less time, not so scary to do a public. If they had a problem there, then it has to go in front of them. If it's a first time event or they had a complaint or problem at their event previously, it still has to go to the board. But anything that's like good to go can be much quicker now. So I'm hoping that will make everybody want to use our parks as venues more often. And, um, other items of like coordinating different groups or doing events in general. And having kind of some town planning, be, uh, uh, encouraging collaboration. Or just scheduling, help to avoid scheduling complex, that kind of thing, the town would like to start coordinating that. Um, I think that's most of the stuff related to parks. Everybody's really excited about the parks plan. There's been a little controversy around the, um, community center feasibility that we've heard from the public. But, um, the general idea is by no means is this signing us up. To pay money for a rec or community center. It is determining if and how and what and when. And how would we pay for one if we were to proceed with that? So I just wanna make sure everyone's clear on that, like we're not signing ourselves up for a community center. We're studying it. So, and determining whether or not the community wants it and whether or not an investment like that would be, again, just. So, uh, if you do hear any of those concerns or questions, that's exactly what it is. You guys are aware of the plan and what we're studying. But that has been something I've heard, um, we've received concerns on, so. Send on my way if you wanna talk about.
Can I say, add something to that? And it's not just, you know, this board or town staff that came up with this. This is from. Um, outreach to the community and their feedback previously at Budget Bonanza's at all of our. Rec events that we've reached out to, yeah, everything, you know, kind of culminating into that. Idea that we could should at least. Search the feasibility of it.
Yeah.
Because of the feedback that we had already received.
Yeah, it was a top three takeaway from our community survey, which is, you know, an independently random. Stat- statistically valid survey, so as this is what we need and want in our town. Um. Yeah. If anybody wants to talk to me about it, I'm happy to do it. And I would encourage them to participate in our engagement sessions so that they can let everybody know how to feel about it. To capture their information, uh, appropriately, so.
Be really cool to have on the, the website. Over the years, we've had different, there's the town. Community members have popped up with different Facebook groups or different things saying, um. Wellington people for pools or Wellington people for community parks, right? And, and, um, it's really nice. It'll be really cool to have all that information just sitting there where people can go check it out and find out like, oh gosh, yeah, there has been efforts.
Yeah.
Um, put in this direction and, and. Yeah, maybe when we could see something.
Yeah, I think, I think it's great. Um, I'm excited to see what we find out.
Um, people were pretty excited about the meeting last night. I got some phone calls, um. Talking about how excited they were and, and how you're such an advocate for parks. Um, so thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I gotta shout out from the library too, so.
Like when people point you to say, oh my gosh, trustee daily, like really like advocates for parks and. And cares, like it means something, like it's pretty cool.
Oh, good, I'm going. That's, that's wonderful. I always try to push you guys hardcore, so. Wow, and it's part of our strategic plan. So there's no question whether or not the board is behind considering it or knowing or anything. All that data has been put into the reason why it was in our strategic plan. There's a specific line item that says. Study the need for a community center, so, yep. Exciting. Oh, sorry, the other thing is, uh, we, uh, did a tabletop exercise with all the emergency services in the area. PSD, um, the county, emerg- for emergency response. So we did an activity where a fire started. That, the scenario was, no fire started. A fire started near the water plant. Um, and then. Migrated into town, so it's a major emergency that we were responding to and seeing how we would do. Um, and so, but again, not really super parks. Related, but just a general public safety concern. Um, so we went over that and I think that's really important stuff too. So I'm gonna be pushing that. And again, I don't know how that relates to post extensively, but that was something I participated in recently, I think, worth mentioning. Just for the general well-being of the town, needing better emergency response and ways to spend money during those emergencies to make sure we. Save lives.
Anybody have any updates on the parks?
Playing pickleball. Four days a week.
Are you serious?
Yeah, I'm not even joking. It's like. Usually Wednesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays and Sundays, they are there and then you switch it around. You very early mornings. But it doesn't seem like what they do is they, they bring their own nets and they leave it halfway. But then they don't block up the actual, the other side of the tennis court, so that they have like, let's see. Four teams playing at the same time, so if other people are there, then they can use the tennis court or like they're, they're super easy. Going and they're like, yeah, no problem, join in or, you know, you don't have to be a part of the club or the team or anything, you just show, play.
Nice. Any deals?
Parks are green. Beautiful right now.
Thank you. So I just wanna say, as we go into, um, master plan, all these conversations, um. I think. Sometimes, um, I know like me in general, like you kind of take it for granted, like everybody's read through and everybody understands everything and we're all good and so forth. Um, it, as you guys go through the master, the old master plan and have any question. I think I'm available, John's available, um, town staff's available, like if we can. I don't know, help anybody understand kind of why. Any of it, um, as he talks about, he talks about level of service. Um, Ryan, tonight, if you go back and you read through the old part talking about level of service, there's things that, um, if you go in, you'll notice that we're missing, right? Because new parks have been added, that's the information that we're needing to, to be included in the new. Um, so making notes about that and then, um. So yes, any updates that you see throughout those items, um, for amenities, levels of service, anything that we can add? And then if you have questions, if we go through, um, please speak out. I'm gonna say that nature. If we can be helpful, um, explaining any of it, um.
Thank you.
I think, can I piggyback on that a little bit? I think one of the pieces that I am really feeling like. For lack of a better word, was lacking. And, and I think this is a, this is a housekeeping moment for us as a board. And, and again, I'm not saying that like, there's a responsibility that we take as board members to make sure we're up to date on things, but. You guys have had such a cohesive, like you've had some real, you guys have been on this board for a very long time. So a lot of those things are second nature to you. When you have new people coming onto a board. I think it would be really solid for us to prioritize there being like an onboarding process for new people. Um, and I think that that's just, you know, life is busy and we all do the best we can to get caught up. But a chance to sit down and ask questions or walk us through those sorts of things would be really beneficial. As, uh, uh, is how I'm feeling as a new board member. I don't wanna speak for anybody else. But that is something that I feel really strongly about, and so I want, that was, that's a whole reason I wanted to send. An email and just communicate that, is that I feel like that's an area that we could just look at as a whole and say, hey, we could do a better job about this. And so that's, that's a piece that I'm feeling, and so I just wanted to be able to share that.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, i- i- it, you're right. And, and, and I think, yeah, you kind of get so in it that you don't think about it or you take for granted. And so, yeah, um, I think having the, the, uh, you know, one of the steps forward was creating the, the, the drive and. Kind of the collection of information, um. I think anything on top of that that we can keep adding, I like the idea of the onboarding. We can make that maybe more. Uh, organized.
Yeah, maybe that's something, and I know it's far off. Last year we did kind of, uh, you know, that, that January meeting, we kicked that off and did a retreat style.
That was kind of my hope was that we were gonna cover those things and they should have spoken up clearer.
And, and maybe we, after everybody's kind of been here for a little bit longer, maybe we don't need to go through that. We can go over what, what we need to catch up on. But maybe that's a great points, part, a great spot in time to develop that. Because we, hopefully, hopefully, looking at you all, we won't have to onboard anybody. And at that point, we'll be at a place where we can, as a team, build that, so the future board can, we can just kind of roll through that. Um. Just, just a thought, since that's kind of a block of time and a little bit less or more of a downtime for us.
Yeah.
But I, I love that idea. I think that's fantastic and, you know, it gives everybody that. General base knowledge that.
I'm a verbal learner too, but you can hand me a packet of stuff and I'll read through it, but hearing your experiences and knowing what projects you've been working on. I mean, that was as a new board member when, when it was Wellington Main Street. I mean, we did a whole full. Onboarding of like, hey, these are the projects the board has been working on. This is the strategic plan that the board has. I mean, all of that information. Makes you feel a little less like you're being put on the spot sometimes, and I think this has been a, this is, this has been a little bit of a struggle and adjustment for me. And I don't wanna feel like I don't wanna do this. I just need to feel like there is that like support from the board as a whole. You know, that we have to be working in the same direction.
Yeah, we can, resources here, just let us know what you need and I can put something together too, or just set some time aside.
Just, yeah. I guess I, my thing is like, it's, I love that you guys are there and you're like, approach us, approach us, approach us, which, uh, yes, I need to do some of that too. I, I can recognize that that falls on me. But as leading board members, that should be a priority. For us as we move forward when we welcome new people in is how are we making them feel comfortable? How are you making sure they're on board with what we're working towards? You know, like, like, let's provide them with the tools that they need.
All the documents.
To be an active, to be a confident, active member of a bo- of our board.
Great.
Love it. Thank you. I think we don't know what we don't know. That's the biggest thing for me. Like I came in and I'm like, we have no idea, right? So it is, it's helpful to know that you guys are available, but I would, I don't even know what to ask sometimes because I don't have that history. So it's a, I feel like it's a meat in the middle. It's. Yeah, it's asking questions, but yeah, then the guidance you guys have, like the history is just.
I think some of it too, um, could be when somebody does come in new and we do get a binder right off the bat, you know, really early. That I could sit down, Laurel gets down, Billy, uh, just kind of flip through it and explain like where we were at, at certain points. Um, the park tours were great because there's certain things that aren't in these that were important as far as like community builds. And the stages of things getting done with community park being done in sections and different things like that, where funding came from for certain things and loans being paid back. There's a lot of information that's not, like, you'd have to search through agendas. And I'm talking for years to find half this information, but the park tours were great. So when we do have events, if we can set aside time where, I know everybody's busy, but if we can get, you know, a few people to show up at the same time. Billy, myself, Laurel Lynn, there at the same time, we can kind of go over some of those, which would be great, cause you're right, it, it's just stuff that's happened to. I mean, I try to go back at times and look through agendas and, and you get so far and you're like, I'm done, where's my drink?
And I think that, that, you know, when we talk about like doing an annual report at the end of every year, that also is a really great way to get. Easy, that information to people without it feeling like, oh my, what am I reading right now? Like, am I reading another financial planning textbook? You know, like what, what am I looking at right now? And that will help us. So for me, it was just about, let's, let's find a way that we can make this. As easy as possible, as we bring in people, cause things are gonna happen. You know, we are gonna have people step back. And we need to be prepared to, just saying, life happens.
I totally understand.
You know, and so, and, and this is a real opportunity, you know, you are saying that like, hey, we do have a really kind of a young board. And the fact that you have a lot of new people, that it's, this is the time to do this.
What I think is really important too, is that. You don't have to know. This is my perspective anyway, um. You don't have to be an expert of all the things in order to participate and do good work. So you don't have to know the history of everything, ever, forever, forever. That, I mean, if you're setting that role and you're only acting in the operation of like, I'm gonna pretend like I've been here for ten years. That's not really serving, uh, everybody comes with their own perspective and passions. So you don't have to be an expert of all the history. I, I, that's never required. You don't have to know everything to participate. So I think if people are coming in and have new ideas, um. That those should be celebrated as much as knowing the history and legacy of, of parks and everything of this entire board. So I would hope that, like, as new people come in, they are gonna have separate interests that aren't related to what's happened in the past. And those should be as welcomed as anything, so. Um, I, I just, I have a big thing, if I had to be an expert on everything that I advise for. I would not get to advise on anything. I am not an engineer. I am not this, I am not that. I don't know a history of. I would not get to advise on anything. I am not an engineer. I am not this. I'm not that. I don't know a history of all of Wellington. Yet I make policy for what we're doing going forward. So you don't have to be an expert of everything to have an opinion and to, to participate. So, um, I, the history is good to know and it's really important to know where everything's come from. But I, I don't think we should definitely discount anybody if they don't have the entire picture of what's brought us to this point, you know?
Think so, but the major thing for me would be that everybody has a, um, grasp on our bylaws. Has a grasp on, um, the, the, uh, master plan, right? So that when people do come in and visit or we are representing out in public, like this is kind of our, our guiding document. And I think spending more time with new people as they come in on, okay, here's the master plan. Here's, here's, um, how we got, you know, here's, here's how we, um, the thoughts behind where we're driving this, right?
Yeah.
And our priorities. I think that's what we're trying to say is like the importance.
Yeah, I just don't think there's like one right way to, to serve, right? There's tons of ways, but that's valuable information for sure.
I think if we're going to bring up the master plan and that's going to be the filter that everything's run through, then it should have been the entire last two years that I've been here. But I haven't heard anybody mention the twenty fifteen master plan. Again, it's got anything until last month. So, yeah, i- i- I mean, having that like as the, hey, the twenty fifteen document was quite a surprise because it's, it hasn't filtered through the dog park, the um, disc golf course, anything that we've done in the last two years. Maybe it may have bumped up against that and that it was a guiding document, but it was never talked about.
What I would hate for is people to be stifled because, um, they don't feel like they have the relevant information. I think people should be able to be curious and ask questions and um, but al- also, you know, everybody knows the rules, like advisors on this too. But I would hate for someone to not ask a question because they weren't familiar with front to end of exactly what a master plan was. I mean, that's more intended for staff to actually advise on actual development plans and those kind of things. So I s- I don't want anybody to feel like they can't speak up or, you know, ask questions.
I think it's a good learning opportunity for all of us as a board. You know, it's like, if we know that a developer is coming in and there have been conversations before, or you know, we know that they're going to be, there's going to be things within a two thousand fifteen master plan that we need to be focused on, then let's do the pre-work as a board and have those conversations. These are pieces that are probably you're going to hear that are being referenced for the two thousand fifteen master plan. This is what our goal is for trails. The developer is most likely going to touch on this. Then that's our job as a board to have those pre-conversations and prep ourselves so that we feel like, you know, we're, we're not being kind of sidelined by it a little bit, or just that we didn't feel like we had the knowledge we wanted to walking into that meeting. And I think it is important to feel like we can ask questions or, or express concerns. I mean, I, we do want it to be. You know, it's like Ryan saying like, hey, here's, here's what we're doing for the two thousand twenty-five master plan. I want all of your input. And if you feel like you've asked a question before and maybe it wasn't asked in the right way, or you overstepped on a master plan previously, from my personal feeling, it makes me want to contribute less. A- and that's in an emotional part of me, uh, you know, it's, it's that piece of then I feel like I shut down when it comes to things. And that's speaking from my perspective.
Thank you for sharing that.
It's been kind of a hard month. I've, I've felt really off since our last meeting and I was just really struggling to find a way to like put it in towards. And, and you know, this isn't advisory board. This is my time. It's all of our time. It's all of our personal lives. And if I feel like I can't come and enjoy it, then I'm not, I'm at a point in my life where I'm not going to do that anymore. I'm going to be very protective of my time. And so I want to be here and I'm passionate about it, but I also don't want to feel like there's, like if we have concerns that come up or, or we need to talk to somebody, let's have those conversations directly with one another. Because that's the only way that our board is going to function. It's the only way that we are going to work together for the better of our community, which is why we're all here. We're all here because we feel really passionately about our community and what we can offer.
Very well said.
Yep. It's definitely something we need to look to do is build a stronger board and take everybody's recommendations into consideration. And acknowledge that, yeah, being a new person doesn't mean you have to know everything, but you know, maybe just getting, like you said, some, some just sit down time, you know, I just, I mean, you said it, you're, you know, verbal learner. So, I mean, just handing that to the first day and walking away isn't going to do you any good. That's something we need to know about or remember. So you need time and you want to talk to somebody, when you do get a binder, I could bring mine and we can go over it. We can just do that on the side. It doesn't have to be in a meeting. And come wherever you're at and go to business and get some coffee or a drink somewhere and, uh, I'll bring mine. So we can do that for sure. Yep. Is definitely appreciated everybody's time. We, uh, myself, I'm, I'm grateful for the group that's here now. The group that's here now is probably the most engaged since I first got on the board, when it was part of the original board. And everybody else has changed. It's been two or three times. This is probably the, one of the greatest groups we have right here. So I don't want to feel like I'm going to lose somebody right now. I'd love to keep this board together and not be replacing any one of you. So know that in my eyes, in my heart, you are wanted here and we appreciate you. I appreciate you. So.
We did volunteer appreciation last month and we went out of our way to, to try to show that appreciation. And so it's hard to hear that, that people weren't feeling that way. Um, but I think, yeah, I think, uh, we all are appreciative. We are representing, um, four thousand residents. Uh, as far as, you know, parks and trails and, and recreation go, so. Great.
Any other updates to anybody? We will adjourn at eight forty.